Empower you and to-
Present, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sodillain? Commissioner, Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Vane?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Chair Bray?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Vane, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Okay. Jennifer, would you like to introduce our-
Yes, thank you, Chair Bray. Good evening, so tonight, we have a new city attorney who is joining us. Rena Gonzalez will be advising the Planning Commission tonight.
Thank you and welcome Rena. So I'll read the procedures. For each matter considered by the commission, there must be a staff presentation, followed by a presentation from the project applicant. Testimony from the supporters of the project will then be taken, followed by the testimony from those in opposition. The applicant will have the right to a final rebuttal presentation prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations, governing the length of public debate, all public testimony from those in support and in opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three lights on the podium next to the microphone will indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins. The yellow light will come on with a soft bell ring when one minute is remaining. The speaker should be completing the testimony by the time the red light comes on, with a final bell indicating that the time has expired. All public testimony must be presented to the commission at the podium. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory manner shall be deemed irrelevant and will not be considered by the commission in making its land use determinations. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised in oral or written testimony, or before the close of the hearing. So we'll start the meeting today with approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Do the commissioners have any changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that passes four to zero. Okay, so, next is the consent calendar. I don't believe we have any minutes from previous meetings, so, and we have, I'm kind of reading off the two things here. We have two entitlements that are on there, so does anyone, any of the commissioners have anything regarding the consent calendar? Have a motion to approve?
You have a motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Bray?
Yes?
You need to take the consent calendar out to the public first.
Oh.
Before you-
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone from the public have anything for the consent calendar? Okay, so now we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes four to zero. Now we have reports by commissioners, are there any reports by commissioners? Okay. And it looks like we don't have any continued matters, so we're going to move to our new matters. And the first one, number C, is consideration of tentative tract number 6291 and related environmental assessment number T 6291, for approximately 4.48 acres of property located on the west side of North Fowler Avenue, between East Fancher Creek Drive and East Tulare. We have our staff report.
Commissioner Bray, the new matters item that you need to be looking at is ID 20-00314.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're correct, so, can we please correct the minutes to that? So we're going to be looking at a staff report for item ID 2000314.
Yes, good evening Chair Bray, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Israel Trejo, with the Planning and Development Department. So this first item before you tonight is vesting tentative tract map number 6275, as well as plan, plan development permit number P 19-04842. These applications were filed by Gary Gianetta on behalf of Gary McDonald Homes. So the subject property is vacant. It's located within the Copper River Ranch master planned community, and it's located near the intersection of North Alicante Drive and North Crestview Drive. The site is surrounded by single-family residential both to the north and west, and to the golf course on the south and east sides. So this is a general plan map of the subject property. Again, it's surrounded by a single-family to the north and west, and golf course to the south and east. So the first part of the application is a vesting tentative tract map. So the application is a proposal to subdivide approximately 10 acres to a 38-lot, single-family residential subdivision at a density of 3.79 units to the acre. The property is planned for medium-low density. Medium-low density allows 3.5 to 6 units to the acre, so this application falls within the medium-low density requirements. All the lot sizes are 5,000 square feet, and which meets the minimum of the RS4 Zone District. So along with the vesting tentative tract map, the applicant submitted a plan development. The plan development is in order to allow a gated private street subdivision. The only modification to setbacks that the applicant is proposing is the standard street side yard setback is 10 feet, and the applicant is proposing 5 feet. Staff has no issue with that. This is a gated private residential subdivision, and only the neighbors within that subdivision would see that setback. So this is a depiction of the map. Again, it's 38 lots, all of the lots are over 5,000 square feet. You'll notice two, two green stars towards the top end of this slide, as well as towards the east end. Staff has required two pedestrian access points to get from within this subdivision to the trail within Copper River Ranch. This project went to the Council District 6 Committee on November 4th, and the committee recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the environmental finding, as well as approve both the conditions of the tract map, as well as the plan development. That concludes staff's presentation, I can answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners to my right? To my left?
Can you elaborate a little bit as far as the proposed PD on a gated private community? Is that, is that what you guys are also proposing?
Yes, so, so this subdivision is essentially finishing up the subdivision to the west. So if you, immediately, I would say northwest of this, this site that's outlined in yellow, this is, this is, this subdivision is basically the second half of that. That first half is gated private street subdivision, and this is finishing up that, that portion of property.
Thank you. Commissioner Vane?
I have a question, have you received any kind of feedback with, from the, from the local residents in that area?
I have not, I haven't received any, you know, opposition phone calls, or mail emailing, any of that nature.
Thank you. Does applicant have a presentation?
The applicant is here.
Okay.
Chair Bray and members of the commission, my name's Gary Gianetta. I'm the project engineer for Gary McDonald Homes. Tract 6275 is a 38-lot semi-custom lot subdivision. It's the second phase of the development of a parcel in Copper River Ranch, and it's the final phase. The first phase is almost completely sold out, and we look forward to starting the second phase as soon as possible. We are in agreement with all the staff's conditions of approval, and I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gianetta. Any questions from my right? From my left? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So do we have any public comment in favor of the application? Do we have any public comment opposed? Thank you, I'll take this back to the commission. So-
I'll pass a motion to approve.
You know, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I had one, one correction to the conditions. So the applicant contacted Public Utilities, and I'd like to strike out condition of approval number 42. So remove the sewer conditions stated November 19, 2019, and insert the conditions stated March 4th, 2020, which were left on the DAS. And essentially with those conditions, sewer had written conditions that required the utility, the sewer utility to be public. DPU is now allowing a public sewer within the site.
Thank you, that's this, that we had up-
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Want to go ahead and make that motion then?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it passes four to zero. Now we'll consider- I get it right this time. So that would be item B, consideration of rezone application, number P 1904890, development permit application number P 190898, and related environmental assessment. So can we have a presentation from staff, please?
Thank you Chair Bray, planning commissioners. My name is Rob Holt with the Planning and Development Department. This is consideration of rezone application number P 1904890, development permit number P 1902898, and the related environmental assessment. The project location is on North Arthur Avenue, just south of West Shaw, and east of North Fruit, intersects with Sierra Madre Avenue. Looking at the development surrounding the property to the north, we have office structures, and northwest is the San Joaquin Hotel. South, we have multifamily residential, as well as west, we have multifamily residential. And east, we have single-family residential. To paint an easier picture, you can see the single-family in yellow, multifamily in orange, and the offices with the hotel to the northwest in purple, with the corridor center mixed use. Looking at our development proposal, they are proposing to construct seven multifamily dwelling units on 0.44 acres, across two buildings. The front building you can see there has four units, two stories, two units per story, and the rear buildings are separated by walls, they're two stories, and there's three units each at the rear. The medium-high-density land use designation allows for between 12 and 16 dwelling units per acre, of which this project complies with. The development standards will be to an RM1 standard, which will require a front setback between 10 and 20 feet, interior side yards setbacks of 5 feet, and a rear setback of 20. Considering the rear setback adjacent to single-family residential use, there is a type 1 landscape buffer required, which would include a minimum width of 10 feet, which you could see there where the trees are located behind the rear building. And that would include also four trees, two of which would be large to, between medium and small, as well as a total of 14 shrubs, six of which would be large, and eight would be medium to small. Looking at the parking requirements, this project is a little unique in that there is a parking reduction allowed for. The project location is, well, a parking reduction can occur when you have a subject property within a quarter mile of a 15-minute frequent service from a transit route. So to kind of paint an easier picture for that, looking at this picture, this small picture on the bottom here is from Fresno Area Express, VAX, the transit service, indicates Shaw Avenue, the dash line is a 15-minute frequent service location. And the location of the property starts at the bottom right. If you were to walk from the edge of property line on sidewalk to the nearest transit stop near Fruit Avenue, it would be .18 miles less than a quarter mile, which would allow for a 30% reduction in parking standards. Now that said, that would leave a requirement of a minimum of seven stalls, although the applicant has provided 10, eight of which are covered with a solar carport. Looking at the open space amenities, at the north end, you can see a common space area with, an open landscape area with shade trees, and a paved area with lounge seating for leisure activities. And then, of course, as mentioned before, the rear yard at the, at the end where the landscape buffer is, also acts as private yards in the backyard. So they each have their own private yard for the rear, on the rear building. Also, a neighborhood meeting was held, and as proposed and conditioned, the project complies with, or staff feels that the project is conditioned to address those concerns from the, from the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. Looking at elevations, the blue building is the front building, the larger two-story with two units each. The rear red building is the three units split up by each wall, at two stories. And you can kind of see the solar, the solar carport structure at the bottom right. Each dwelling unit will have two bedrooms and two baths. The staff did bring it to Council District 1's Project Review Committee. There were no tangible comments from the committee, they ultimately unanimously recommended approval, five votes to zero. That concludes the development, well, sorry, this is the aerial with the site plan, so you can kind of see, it's a little bit small, I tried to get it as close as I could. You can see how the development will occur with the surrounding land use, if they were to develop, how it's, what it would look like. Concluding that, going into the rezone requirement, this project currently has conditions of zoning, so the request is to remove those conditions of zoning from the RM1 CZ Zone District, which is conditions of zoning, to just RM1. And the conditions of zoning were approved from 1980, at a time where, basically, the conditions of zoning stated that not more than three units, dwelling units, can be constructed on the subject property. At that time, it was planned for single-family uses. As time has gone by, now we're currently in our new general plan update. It is at a medium-high density, which requires five to seven. So essentially, it's almost as if it's a cleanup, where we are removing conditions of zoning to provide consistency with today's standards from our general plan and zoning. With that, staff recommends approval of the development permit, the rezone and related environmental assessment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my right? From my left?
Maybe perhaps you did answer this, I just didn't hear it. What is the square footage of every unit? Are they all the same square footage?
They're slightly different, the, I don't have the, I can, let me pull the file. So the front building will have approximately, each unit will be 975 square feet, so that's four units on that building, the three-unit building will be 1,270 square feet each.
Thank you. So I have a question. These are two-story, are there other two-story dwellings in that area? I know you said the hotel is, is, is it adjacent to it, I was, hard for me to tell.
No. It's catty corner.
Okay. And I, I know you said that the backyards that are adjacent to the single-family homes
Mm-hmm.
are 10 feet?
The, that was, that would be a buffer, the total, the building is 20 feet away from the, the yards.
Okay.
Or from the setback.
Okay. Thank you, and then you said you did have a neighborhood meeting, but you really didn't say what the neighborhood's response was.
Yes, that is... They had concerns regarding proximity and height of the buildings in relation to the uses, additional traffic, and additional demand for street parking, as, as Arthur is a slim street. Those were the concerns raised.
Alright, thank you. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Thank you, good evening. My name is Esteban Poli, I'm the owner and principal engineer of Poli Engineering. It's a consulting and design firm here in Fresno for 25 years. We've designed buildings throughout California, apartments, office buildings, restaurants, and so forth and so on. A few years ago, we purchased an office building on Shaw Avenue between Marx and Van Ness, and that's where we established our office. And we do have some tenants, we did improvements for accessibility bathrooms, and so forth and so on. Eventually, we purchased a second building on the same office complex, and we did also some improvements for, for our tenants. So this is basically a growth process for, for our firm. The next step now is to develop this property on Arthur Avenue, which is only a couple of blocks away from our office, and it all feels part of our community, anyway. So we started the develop, the planning process in October 2018, so it's been a while. We did work with three different planners through the process, and that allowed us to, to get a really good understanding of what the process is, and so forth and so on. We also met with the neighbors and got really good communication with their needs and concerns. The site will feature landscape, solar-covered carports for the residents. There's designated parking stalls for every resident. There's going to be on-demand charging stations for electric vehicles, and there's also accessible, accessible parking for people with disabilities, right? The building, the buildings feature a modern architectural style, you saw the renderings. It's going to have open floor plan, energy-efficient electrical appliances, and mini-split systems, meaning there's going to be thermostats, separate thermostats for each bedroom and for living areas, maximize energy efficiency. So in summary, the units are not really designed for high-end or luxurious use, but they are designed for comfortable and modern lifestyle, again emphasizing environmental approach and energy efficiency. Back to your question, the units have two bedrooms, two baths, so it can be rented by a family, or perhaps two different people, where they would have privacy on each, having a private bedroom and bathroom, and then there'll be a separate common area for kitchen and living room, and so forth. The units on the back are townhouses, they're a little bigger, and they're set up as townhouses. The planning process, like I said, it was fairly extensive, and we, we did learn a lot, and we implemented a number of changes that were necessary to optimize a project. and we implemented a number of changes that were necessary to optimize a project. The surprise in some way occurred in August two thousand and nineteen, where this document was discovered back from nineteen eighty, that for some reason, you know, it was not readily available somehow, and that's what triggered the need for rezoning and environmental assessment, assessment. So this phase was completed for Mr. Holt, appreciate your, your help on that, and we're, we're ready to go. So we respectfully requested the, the motion to remove that condition, we, we approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant, from my right? From my left?
I do have a question. If I may, may I ask what the range of your rents are going to be from lows to highs? Is that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well.
The range of the rent that you will be charging?
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, we're estimating between a dollar thirty and a dollar forty per square foot, and that's going to translate to about thirteen hundred to sixteen hundred dollars per unit, per month.
Thank you. I have the last question, and the last question is, that you said that there were some needs and concerns from the surrounding neighbors. May we know what those concerns were? And, and what is it that, that you guys are going to do to negotiate with the people that are already established around the area?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I can certainly answer and expand on that. The neighbor to the north, she's an accountant, she has her practice office there, and she had a concern that the, this access to our property would be too close. She has a drainage system there that's too close, and we ended up changing our driveway, we moved it further away from her property, so there's a planter, a buffer zone, and basically that was her primary concern, that was resolved. And then the neighbor to the north, he had concerns with privacy, with his residence being, you know, relatively close. And so we worked on that, and we set up the buildings in such a way that the, the townhouses that are closest to the area where he has more privacy are set up in a certain way that the windows are facing to the street and to the back. So there's really no windows facing towards his property. So that was also resolved, you know, in the design process. I think these are the, the primary concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Do we have any public comment in favor of the application? Do we have any public comment opposed? Yes, sir, come up. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Michael Mecca, three zero seven West Sierra Madre. My house is located directly across the street from the proposed property. It, I'm very much in support of the project. I think it's going to be beautiful. It's very well-designed. My, what I'm here tonight about is a concern, I was the one who particularly stressed at the neighborhood meeting about parking, because we have serious parking problems as it is on Arthur. The second property to the south of the proposed property is an apartment, a rental area with insufficient parking. The residents of that area park up Arthur both sides of the street, under the trees, which they really should not be parking on, they often, wheels are on top of the sidewalks. It blocks your view of oncoming traffic if you're trying to make a turn from Sierra Madre and Arthur. To the north, the hotel often has guests that park up Arthur and then around the corner onto Sierra Madre. So I don't know, as I said, I support the project. I think it's going to be terrific, but I, I don't know what can be done, but I just, you know, didn't want to miss the opportunity to present the fact that parking is going to be even more of an issue because there's not enough designated units, or not enough designated spaces for the number of units, the number of drivers that will be occupying them.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we'll take this back to the other response. Can we have a, a response? I guess from the, I don't know if it's staff or applicant, that you give us a response on that parking issue?
So the applicant is proposing ten parking spaces. The code requires eleven. However, as Rob explained earlier, since it's, it's within a quarter mile of a fifteen-minute bus transit stop, they're actually allowed to go down to seven, but the applicant is proposing ten. So in actuality, the applicant is proposing one less lot than the code requires, but with, with the proximity to the, to the fifteen-minute bus stop, they can actually go down to seven, but they're proposing ten parking spaces, and there are only seven units that are being proposed.
And am I correct in assuming there's no way to add more parking spaces in that size of a parcel?
Yes, it's a very odd-shaped parcel, and there's actually, there's a PG and easement that runs through the property, so, you know, getting all the, the buildings on there was a tough task.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? I'll take this back to the commission. So does anyone have any comments, or can I get a motion?
Commissioner Bray, is there a member of the public in the back who's raising their hand?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I apologize. Please, sure, of course, I just didn't see you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Claude Syce, Syce Construction. I live in the property south of this project, and the parking is a problem. I mean, it really is. If you go down there now, you'll see what I'm talking about. And I've had the, I've had the police department come and move cars from my, in front of my property because I couldn't get out. Not one time, maybe three, four times a year, okay? That's one thing. Another thing is, this is my, my business is renting properties, as the staff member notes. I buy properties and I have them rented, and, and, and this man said he's got, how many square feet did he have a unit? Did I say it here, two hundred? Two hundred square feet?
I believe he said some of them were nine something and the others were twelve, approximately, as I recall.
Square feet was it, per unit? So eight units.
Commissioner Bray, he needs to direct questions to you and then you can ask the...
Please direct the questions to us.
Sure. How many?
You need to direct the questions to the commission.
How many square feet in this unit, did you say?
It was a, a little over nine hundred, I believe, in one of them.
So, let, Commissioner Bray, what, the, the public comment, can you list all the questions? And then after their time is up, then you can call the applicant back up to respond.
Well, we can, we can, we'll call him back up and find that out for you, sir.
Okay. The reason I brought this up, he's, he's, he's talking about renting them for the twelve, thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred dollars. What I hate to see, I've seen this before, a landlord tries to rent them for that price, he has a turnover, and he drops his rent. And when he drops his rent, the, the clientele he's going to get is not very good. Okay? And when he gets, his rent is high and he hasn't got that much room, people, people bring in two or three families, and I can see that happening in there, unless you have a real good management, real good management, I mean really on it. The, the property next door, they have some apartments there, and he's not renting that high at all, at all, and he's got some nice units, and he tries to keep away from a lot of families, and it well, well, well-controlled. So I hate to, hate to see this happen, to make me to move next door because of this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question really quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sir?
Oh, you want, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Bang has a question.
Just have a quick question for you. So with the, the current lot right now, so when I read in the staff report, the current lot itself is vacant, correct?
I, I can hear you, I'm sorry.
What, the current lot? The current lot right now, it's currently vacant?
Yes, it's vacant.
Okay.
Long time.
What's the condition of it? Because when I read, what's in?
Ugly.
Is that, okay.
Well, there's grass, the owner, prior owner, I was going to buy it, but I, my wife says, you don't want to build stuff next to us. Yeah, so I bought it, I just kept it vacant. The, the former owner, I was telling you, the gentleman that bought the property, the former owner would cut the grass in the summertime, August, dust all over, I'd have to water it the day before he cut it, and then I start doing it myself or him for that reason. I mean, it just, right now, the grass is probably just tall, it's probably two feet tall, you know? And that's why it's always like that. So if he improved it, fine, but that's squeezing a lot of units in a small property like that. It really is. And I didn't like the design of the building anyway, I mean, it's kind of, that's my opinion, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get the size of the units again for this gentleman?
There's two different types of units. The ones on the front building are nine hundred and seventy-five square feet, and the ones in the back are twelve hundred and seventy square feet, townhouses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions? And I'll bring it back to the commission. Can I have a motion, please?
I just wanted...
I'm sorry.
I have a motion to approve, however, I, I will really definitely would like to see something be done. I would like to see the, the impact that it's going to have on the traffic and, you know, maybe perhaps they could agree with the current neighbors of bringing it back at some time, I don't know. I, I really don't know if anything could be done in the future, but, I mean, I could sympathize with the residents around it, but I also know that investment, info investment is wonderful and welcome in, in Fresno, and we need it, so I definitely would have to just approve, pass a motion to approve.
I'm in support of the project, but I think it would be really nice if the applicant would cut the grass for the neighbors. So I'll, I'll make a motion to accept. I don't know, did you make a motion?
He made a motion.
To approve?
Yes.
I'll second that as long as they cut the grass.
Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So it passes four to zero. Thank you. Now we'll consider, that was our last one, right? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Do we have a report by the secretary?
I'd like to call up the Assistant Director, Dan Zuck, to introduce our new planner. Typically, we introduce planners when they're new to our planning commission.
Yeah, we should have done this before. He actually gave a presentation to you guys for the first time, so forgive us, but Rob Holt is a, one of our newer planners, although he's been with us for a while, comes to us from the city of Madera, Madera native and a CSU Northridge graduate. He's a planner three on the Level Four team, and we're happy to have him, and he's doing great work, and this is the first of many times you'll be seeing him, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
We, we figured out you were okay, because you came up and talked to us, so we figured that was all right, so.
Okay, do we have any oral communications? Nope. Okay, any unscheduled oral communications? And it is, what time is it? Six forty-three, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.